See the floor if you have any opening comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. Members of the Board, in partnership with the University of Louisiana at Lafayette, the Lafayette Parish School System is holding its third annual Advanced Placement Summer Institute. The institute offers high-quality professional development for teachers of advanced placement and pre-advanced placement courses. This year, the institute runs over a two-week period from July 11th through the 24th. There are eighty-seven teachers from districts in the region being trained to teach AP and pre-AP courses by College Board endorsed consultants in eight subjects. This endeavor takes a full year of planning, and special thanks to Mr. Randy Bernard and his staff for facilitating that event. Congratulations goes out to our two newest principals. They were named this morning. They're middle school principals, Ms. Kimberly A.T.A. at Milton Elementary Middle School and Ms. Sanji Fontenot at Judy's Middle. Ms. Fontenot was recently an assistant principal at Edgar Martin Middle School, and Ms. A.T.A. is joining us from Vermillion Parish where she was an assistant principal at J.H. Williams Middle School. They will be recognized at a board meeting in the near future. The Lafayette Parish School Board will have a public hearing and special board meeting on Wednesday, September 7th at 4:00 PM and 4:30 respectively to consider levying additional or increased millage rates without further voter approval or adopting the adjusted millage rates after reassessment and rolling forward to rates not to exceed the prior year's maximum. Again, that will take place at a special board meeting on Wednesday, September 7th. Students from our three emerging elementary schools took part in the extended school year program. The students participated in reading and math lessons, fast-forward and library activities. Although most students had one reading level gained from the twenty-day session, I want to recognize the number of students who gained two or more reading levels per grade. Depending on the grade, this could be considered either a quarter to a half year of reading growth in twenty days of intervention. At Alice Boucher in kindergarten, two students grew two reading levels. For a first grader grew, in first grade, two students also grew two reading levels. Second grade, two students grew two levels. Third grade, one student grew three reading levels. In fourth grade, three students grew two levels, two students grew three levels, and one student grew four levels in twenty days of intervention. At Karen Crow Heights in kindergarten, one student grew two reading levels. In first grade, one student grew two levels, one student grew three levels, and one student grew four levels also. And at J.W. Falk Elementary in kindergarten, one student grew two reading levels. First grade, two students grew two levels. Second grade, one student grew two levels, two students grew three levels, and one student grew seven levels. And at third grade, three students grew two levels. Although it is hard to measure this success, in my opinion, this experiment, this pilot at the three elementary schools for these students really speaks to the power of intervening during the summer to prevent summer slide. And so, I know we had a, we had a group effort to fund this. There was some federal dollars involved, some general fund dollars, and maybe other dollars, tobacco money perhaps that was involved in this. We really need to look seriously at trying to expand this summer program if we can financially because we're helping these children to stay on track to be, where they need to be at grade level. Last week, next week, over five hundred teachers from across Louisiana will be in Lafayette attending the annual Super Summer Institute. The institute is co-hosted by the Louisiana Department of Education, South Louisiana Community College, and the Louisiana Community College System. The institute is held primarily at the South Louisiana Community College with Karen Crow High School and W.D. and Mary Baker Smith Career Center, serving as satellite sites for instruction. During the intense week-long training, teachers will be earning credentials in areas such as welding, carpentry, electrical, four-stroke engine, automotive ASE certification, micro-enterprise certified nursing assistant, patient care technician, emergency medical responder, Adobe certification, C.I.W. Web Foundation Associate, Autodesk and AutoCAD certification, and computing technology industry. Congratulations to our area teachers who will be participating in this week-long event. Also, next week, the Lafayette Parish School Systems Technology Department is hosting their fourth annual technology conference on July 19th through the 20th at David Thibodeau STEM. This conference is free to all school employees. This conference will cover all technologies, grade levels, and subject areas. Tech centers will offer both concurrent sessions and hands-on sessions which will be presented by educators from around our region and our partners. This year, the LITA conference will be open to ed tech lovers from all of Region Four. This includes Lafayette Parish, Lafayette Diocese, local charter schools, local parochial schools, UL Lafayette College of Education, SLCC, Acadia Parish, Evangeline Parish, Iberia Parish, St. Landry, St. Martin, and Vermillion Parish. Congratulations to LaShawna Dickerson and her team for organizing this event. The Lafayette Parish School System will begin a new school year with the administrative conference being held at the David Thibodeau STEM Magnet School. The administrative conference, the administrative teams from each of our schools and central office staff will collaborate and choose from over forty-three breakout sessions being provided by LPSS staff and professional vendors. Our first day will include a keynote presentation by national presenter, consultant, and author, Kenneth Williams. Ken's topic will be on building effective professional learning communities and will draw information from his, from his book, Starting a Movement: Building Culture From the Inside Out in Professional Learning Communities. All school board members are invited to attend the administrative conference. The dates are Monday, July 25th through Thursday, July 28th. And you may have checked your email today, we are asking LSBA to authorize up to twelve hours of school board member training hours if you choose to attend any or all of those sessions that are available. And in closing, this Friday night, Mrs. Felice Williams, Principal of Evangeline Elementary, will be honored at the 10th Annual Cecil P. Card Educator Excellence Symposium in celebration as a State Principal of the Year semifinalist. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. I want to make just one quick comment about what you said about the summer program. As a former teacher, and I see something in here as well, I totally agree with that. As a teacher, one of the things that teachers do for the first couple of weeks of school is kind of catch up on what the students kind of, you know, forgot about all during the summertime, so, and that would probably be a good, a good, a good, a big help. Before we move on, I would like to, upon his request, grant one of our colleagues personal privilege and give the floor to Mr. Eric Koenizik.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank, well, first off announce, it was publicly announced last week, that I've suspended my campaign for the third congressional district. And I just want to take a few minutes to talk about how humbling and educational the experience was for me. I learned a lot. I had the opportunity to travel the entire district from basically the Chappalaya to the Sabine River and meet folks and learn things about our district and our state that I didn't know before. I had a great opportunity to make a lot of great friends and to meet people that are very passionate not only about their community but our state and our country. And for me, it was a very, again, I just want to say, very humbling and educational experience. The one thing that I'm most proud of, and for those who were able to attend some of the events that I was speaking at or some of the fundraising events, the one thing that I've, that I was always the most proud about was being able to boast and be able to talk about something that no other candidate had, and I was able to talk about having the unanimous support of you, and I'm talking to my fellow board members. I had the ability to say that the people that I work with, the people that I've worked with for a year and a half support me. They support me financially, they support me vocally, they put their name and their stamp on me, and it supported me in my efforts and my endeavors to, to reach the House of Representatives. And so, for all of you, I wanted to publicly say thank you. I know it's not easy. Politics aren't easy. We're a very diverse board. We're racially diverse, men, women, and I would say we have Republicans, we have Democrats. So, to be able to earn the support of such a diverse board was the single thing that I was most proud about and the thing that, you know, I will, I will forever cherish in my opportunity to run. So with that, I'm going to live to fight another day. I learned a lot in this experience. I thank all of you for your support. I tremendously thank you for your, your support, and I plan to continue to serve Lafayette Parish and continue to serve southwest Louisiana and continue to work to make our nation better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric, very much, and you're welcome. Moving along to item 2.2 is the Slimco Scholarship Recognition. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Samick.
Yes, sir, good evening and thank you. Mary Laurent is Slimco Communications Manager. She is with us tonight, and she will be making a presentation regarding the Slimco scholarships.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me take a few minutes of y'all's time. I know you have a busy agenda. This is the 25th year that Slimco has awarded college scholarships to students throughout our service area, which is an eight parish service area. And this year, we crossed the million-dollar mark in, as far as money that we give away to kids to go to college. Many of these students throughout these years have come from Lafayette Parish, and this year, we had two winners, it's a random drawing, we had two winners come from Lafayette High School, and they each received $2,000 to go to school this coming fall and spring. Many more, excuse me, many more out of that group are college students from Lafayette Parish who have just recently gotten out of the Lafayette Parish School System. And so, what I wanted to do here was again, let you know the student, the two students' names, Devon Minnick and Bradley Libierre from Lafayette High School, but also to point out how valuable your guidance counselors have been to us because the guidance counselors who help us get the applications in the hands of the senior students who were then able to apply for these scholarships to help them with their college tuition. Every year, we work with them, and I wanted to thank you for letting them work with us to do that, and we look, certainly look forward to doing that again in the years to come. We have no intention of stopping the program, and especially now with all the situation in college where it's harder and harder every year for students to go to college, this helps them out a whole lot. So, we just wanted to thank you for that and also to point out the two winners that came from Lafayette High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to Slimco. Moving along for recognitions, we have the ASBO Certificate of Excellence and the GFOA Award of Financial Reporting Achievement for fiscal year 2015. Am I to recognize Mr. Guidry, Mr. Guidry?
Yes, with regards to our financial reporting year, fiscal year 2015, it culminated with, of course, an external audit in which produces ultimately an annual comprehensive financial report, which we submit to national organizations for a rigorous review with regards to its content and format. And this, for the fiscal year 2015, both organizations, the Association of School Business Officials International, known as ASBO, and the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, both organizations bestowed the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting to Lafayette Parish School System. So, I wanted to share the good news with the board members and publicly thank all of our employees who contribute to this, to our success.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. Congratulations are in order. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Ms. Morris?
Mr. Angel, a move that we approved the minutes listed under Section 3 and received the reports listed under Section 4 in Globa.
Section 3 and Section 4 to include 4.1 through 4.7? Okay, we have a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Centini, second to motion. We have, we have any questions or comments from any members of the public concerning this motion? From members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we will call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
Motion carries. Moving along on the information reports, we have personnel changes for July 13th. I'd recognize-
Mr. Angel?
Mr. Craig?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Angel, board members, we have three new administrators we'd like to recognize tonight. First off, we have Ms. Sheree Fontenot. She is the new principal at Green Tea Linden Elementary School. Please approach the podium. Ms. Fontenot earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree in elementary education from UL Lafayette and a Master's in Educational Leadership from the American College of Education. Mrs. Fontenot served as a middle school teacher at Sacred Heart Elementary and Director of Education at Our Lady of Cooning of All Saints Catholic Church. She has also served as an elementary teacher for four years at James Stevens Montessori School in Villeplatte, and she is just in her current, previously vacated position, she was serving as the principal of James Stevens Montessori School. In addition to her service, Ms. Fontenot is a National Board Certified Teacher and has earned an International Montessori Teaching Certificate. She has earned many awards, including Teacher of the Years at James Stevens Montessori School and the Outstanding Community Contribution Award by the Villeplatte Mayor. Her school was a top-gained school in 2012 and in 2014. Her highest professional accomplishment was being awarded Louisiana Elementary Principal of the Year for 2016. Congratulations, Ms. Fontenot, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I would just like to take a moment to thank Dr. Aguilar, the selection committee and the board members for giving me this awesome opportunity to join such a progressive district as Lafayette Parish. I look forward to continuing the tradition of excellence that is the culture of Green Tea Linden School, as well as having a positive impact and continuing to build capacity in students, in faculty members, and in the community. I would also like to take a moment to thank my husband and my family who sacrificed themselves in sharing me with everyone else so that I can do what I love and not to serve others. And I look forward to serving you. Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with Ms. Fontenot, the next two ladies I've had the opportunity to work with. So, without further ado, Ms. Catherine Cassidy, the principal at Southside High School to be opening next fall. Ms. Cassidy earned a Bachelor of Science and Master's of Education degree from UL Lafayette. She's taught health and PE education at the Academy of Sacred Heart. She's taught business English and physical education at Iota High School. She's been at Acadia High School for the last sixteen years where she served as the health and PE education teacher, head girls' basketball coach, and also as an assistant principal. In addition to her service, Ms. Cassidy was named the State Louisiana High School Phys-Ed Recreation Department Secondary Health and Physical Education Teacher of the Year and the District 358 Girls' Basketball Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Cassidy, on your promotion to the principal of Southside High School.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, Mr. Guidry, Ms. Samick, Mr. Craig, board. I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. I'm going to take the, kind of the Grammy approach, right? We take out your list out the pocket because I do want to thank so many people for this opportunity. But the board, I would like to say that you're, when you were put in the position after approving hiring your principal for Southside High School, let me just say that after five days of work with zero students in no building, I have enough work to do for the next several weeks, okay? So, it was a job well done, taking the approach of hiring now because I have a lot of work to do that I'm really excited and happy to be a part of. I want to thank my family for supporting me in this endeavor that I'm venturing out on, and I also want to thank the colleagues at Acadia High School. I have been there for sixteen, I'm eighteen years, and when it comes time for me to retire, I probably will say more than half of my career was spent at Acadia High School. So, I would like to take, take the opportunity to thank those individuals in the capacity of teaching, in the capacity of coaching, and in the capacity of administration. All of those colleagues, I don't want to forget Ms. Hyatt. For those of you who were familiar with Ms. Hyatt, she was a great mentor to me whenever I was a teacher and kind of guiding me in this direction that I'm going now. Thirdly, I would like to thank Mr. Lejeune. He's the hardest one that I, that I have a hard time thanking. I can't even look in his direction right now because I do, I do not get emotional easy. But the opportunity that he gave me four years ago to work at Acadia, and he allowed me the opportunity and just different avenues to grow in the capacity of administration. And I have all of that to thank Mr. Lejeune for. I hope that I can carry or I will carry out the love and loyalty that I have at Acadia for Southside. That love and loyalty is always already beginning to grow, and I will continue to grow out, grow that, and I know that you guys will have the faith in me to carry that out. Dr. Aguilar and board, thank you for having the confidence in me. I know you were faced with a difficult decision with lots of applicants, and I know that you made the right decision. I'm just glad that you are in a position now that you know you made the right decision, and I won't, I won't steer you wrong. You'll, you'll be happy that you made the right choice. That's it, thank you.
And lastly, only because her name begins with a Z, Ms. Mary Yvonne Zino, Principal of Como High School. Ms. Zino earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree at Southwestern Louisiana University and a Master's in Ed Leadership from Northwestern State. Mrs. Zino has served as a teacher and head girls' basketball coach, track and cross-country coach at Northside High School. Her administrative experiences include serving as the curriculum coordinator at Karen Crow Middle School, acting principal at Northside High School, and her most recent position is assistant principal at Lafayette High School. In addition to her service, Mrs. Zino has been awarded the 1996 Girls' Basketball Coach of the Year and Who's Who Among Americans teachers. Congratulations to Ms. Zino on your promotion to Como High.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr. Aguilar. I'd like to thank Mr. Guidry, Ms. Samick, and Mr. Craig on your panel, Board President, President, Mr. Tommy Angel, and all of the other board members on your approval of my new job as the principal of Ove Como High School. For those of you who know me, you know that I don't give up on any task easily, and if there's something that I want, I'm a go-getter. And this is something that I truly, truly am grateful and humbled to accept is the position as being the new leader at Ove Como High School. I realize that this is a responsibility that I do not take lightly, and I do want you to know that I am going to work efficiently in my new post and in the growth, in the school growth. I am so excited to have already started my job at Como High School and working with Ms. Lejeune, Ms. Matthews, the two assistant principals who have been carrying me, and we do have a new-appointed assistant principal, Mr. Chad Gilery, who will be joining us. I'm excited about the work that I've already done and the work that is to come. I'm excited about working with the parents and staff. I can remember during my interview, I was begging them to please allow me to join your team, and now that I have joined your team, I want you to know that you have a hard worker that's on staff, and anything that they need, they know that they can come in and ask for it, and it just means that I'll be at central office bothering you all to get them what they need. I'm excited about working with the parents and the staff, the students and the parents, and some of them I've already met. I'm excited about working with the community, and some of those people in the surrounding area have already come to complain about my facilities. So, again, I'll be running to central office to try to get the things I need to beautify my campus. Again, I am grateful, I'm humble, and I want you to know, Dr. Aguilar, that you have made an excellent choice for Ove Como High School. I'd also like to thank the people who have been very supportive, my friends, and I do have with me this evening my little family who has been with me through this ordeal. They keep saying, "Mom, you gonna apply for another job?" I said, "Your mom does not give up. Your mom will be watching that website and looking for something new." So, now that I do have it, I want to thank them for their support in this endeavor. I'd like to introduce to you my husband, Leonard Zino. He's bad. I'd like to introduce to you my two daughters who attend Lafayette High School, and one of the hardest things is to leave my babies behind, but I know that they're at a great school, like all of our schools in the district, and I can't wait to connect with Southside. I have to say that because that's the new school on the list. But I'd like for my daughters to stand, Nalani Zino, who is a senior at Lafayette High School. She is a part of the gifted program, she's a part of the Health Academy, and I do want to brag about her 4.0 because she is a go-getter just like her mom. And I also would like to introduce to you my baby girl, Nadia Zino. She's a 10th grader at Lafayette High School, and both of them participate in the athletic programs at Lafayette High School, so that's why I'm not trying to move them to Como High School because I know that they are not ready to leave their friends. However, there is a shift that is about to take place with the opening of Southside High School, and I'm going to be inheriting the Performing Arts Academy, and they will be joining the Visual Arts Academy at Como High School. That's when a decision has to be made if my child is going to wear green or blue. And I want, I've already stressed to Lafayette High School and to Dr. Thornton that we're going to work closely together to make sure that there is a smooth transition as we move those academies to Como High School, and I am praying that someone finds a lot of love for Ove Como High School and make sure that we get this auditorium that we need because you can't have a Performing Arts Academy, a visually performing arts academy with no auditorium. So, when I attended last night's meeting, I was very pleased to hear some positive remarks in the direction that we're going. So, for those of you who are tooting our little horn, please thank you and continue to support us. Again, I am grateful, I am very humble about my new position at Ove Como High School, and I will definitely be calling upon anyone and everyone that I can to make sure that I'm a success. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the ladies' sentiments and thank the parent, the families for coming out and supporting the, their spouses and the administrative colleagues that show up because I know you have very few days left in your summer. So, as Mr. Angel frequently says, if you have another meeting that you need to attend, you can attend or you're welcome to stay. And that would be it for the big changes this month. The second month of August, we'll have another round of introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. You did, you took the words right out of my mouth. You beat me to it, however. The next items on our agenda are introduction items. I'll read them, and they will be up for adoption at the next regularly scheduled meeting. 6.1, request for approval of grant submission, the Louisiana Restaurant Association Education Foundation Pro Start Program. 6.2, request for approval of grant submission, Whole Kids Foundation Garden Grant. 6.3, request for approval of grant submission, Lafayette Education Foundation Grant. 6.4, request for approval of grant submission, Books on Wheels. 6.5, request for approval of grant submission, Acadia Center for the Arts Grant. 6.6, revisions to policy, the policy BH, School Board Ethics. 6.7, revisions to policy EBBG, Hazardous Substances. 6.8, adoption of policy DIEA, Preservation of School Board Records Due to Legal Action. 6.9, request approval for submission of the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Local Application Plan. 6.10, request approval for submission of Jobs for America Graduates. 6.11, request approval for submission of Jobs for America's Graduates Continuation Grant. Grant. 6.12, approval of modified job description, electrician 2. 6.13, approval of modified job description, transportation coordinator operations. 6.14, approval of job description, federal programs supervisor. 6.15, human resource reorganization. 6.16, prescription drug plan recommendation. 16.17, pupil progression plan. 6.18, RFP 22-16, garbage collection and recycling services. That concludes the introduction items for the agenda tonight. On the agenda, item 7, our time-sensitive action items. I would read those action items and ask that any of you who wish to pull any of them, let me know. Pull them. 7.1, approval of SEAL quotes for Judas Middle Sewer Main replacement. 7.2, self-funded construction fund budget revision for Karen Crowe High School waterproofing the bricks. 7.3, capital improvement fund budget revision for a new project, Prairie Elementary Structural Repairs. 7.4, self-funded construction fund budget review for Lafayette Middle, also waterproofing the bricks. 7.5, capital improvement fund budget revision for a new project, Como High Batting Cage Foundation. 7.6, capital improvement fund budget revision for Scott Middle, replace underground chilled water and hot water piping. 7.7, resolution 07-16-1885 to advertise and award oil and gas and mineral leases for Section 16 property. Item 7.8, approval. No items were pulled, then I would accept the motion that we approve all of the items that are mentioned in-
Motion to approve.
-action agenda. Dr. Chasson makes the motion?
I'll second.
And Mr. Lachey is going to second that motion.
History has just been made. I'm part of it.
We're all part of it.
Yes, we are.
Any questions or comments concerning the motion from any members of the public? Any members of the board?
Nine, four, none against.
Mr. President, I move that the board enter into executive session.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Hidalgo, second, and by Dr. Chasson, that we go into executive session. If there's, I'm going to, yeah, I'm just going to ask, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, Ms. Morris?
I move that we return to regular session.
Motion by Ms. Morris, second by Ms. Morrison, that we go back into regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried, it was unanimous, Madam Secretary. Ms. Morris?
I move that we accept the recommendation-